Committee meeting for Tuesday, December 2nd, 6:00 PM. Let the record show that all aldermen are here with the exception of Alderman Forney and Alderman Anastasia. And Alderman Kiri doesn't technically count.
Correct.
But he's listening in. Okay. Provo of the previous committee meeting for Tuesday, November 18th. I'll make a motion. Do I have a second?
Sure.
Second amendment. Robinson, all in favor?
Opposed.
Okay. Unfinished businesses, capital funds. I think you'll have to take that spot. No, you can come on that one. There's this way.
He will not be here. I was gonna say the mayor will be here.
Okay. All right, you're on.
All right, next one on the target is Capital Project 230. The levy would be returned. That project started in fiscal year 2023-24. And it was funded by the council transfer fund balance. That project is ongoing right now. We have a balance left in there of $21,700,000 right now.
So I think we'll probably need to check in with Brad and James to see where they're at. Which they were going to send out, weren't we going to do an RFP for engineering to come in? And wasn't that what we were going to do?
They are still working on the report and we have a follow-up. Either at the next committee meetings.
Okay.
This month or the first month in January, but we do have it pending on.
Okay, okay. So we're scheduled already.
Yeah, issues with the RFP, we're here in Stockholm.
Okay.
And the next one is Capital Project 232. Not fully in store construction. Project is done. There's no one left. And I spoke with Brad yesterday. That one can be closed.
Okay, so we'll go to add the, to close that, because I think there's another one to close today.
Did that one, did that one just have a zero balance or the money already got moved?
Zero balance, that's it. They used the within that was in there. So that we had a budget, they could do the budget and finish it again.
So I'm saying it went over that or it went to the exact amount?
Exact amount. Whatever we put in there as well we lose.
I think for that one, we moved the exact amount they needed.
I believe so. And next one is Capital Project 233, charter review commission. That project started in 2023-24 fiscal year. And it was also funded by council resolution transfer. And right now we have a balance of $21,764,032 left in there. And I think that's still ongoing. I'm not sure where we've moved it.
So we're done per se, but since we can't put it out to the public until the next election cycle, I would encourage us to leave this here in case we need to do any other adjustments. Does that sound reasonable?
And there was another adjustment here, it looks like. Where it says revisions, so that might have been the last revision that ever made in that final meeting.
Next one is 234, the Butler House. That project started in 2023-24 fiscal year. Same deal which was funded by council transfers. Right now, we haven't thought too much in that project. I think it's waiting for RFP. And I don't know where that is at the moment.
You want to, you want to RFP, you said?
Yeah, James was going to put it out.
He said it went out.
Yeah.
Yeah, he was working on the RFP, working on finishing it off, and he has a piece of tile on the bottom.
Yes, the reason why that's the monitor. And the anticipation is that this is going to not begin to cover what we need for that. So I think as we look to the next budget, to see what we need to do there.
All right, next one is Capital Project 235, ash tree removal. That project also started in 2023-24 fiscal year. Same deal, it was transferred, it was funded by council transfers as well. And right now we have a balance of $48,216,000 left in that capital project.
Can you go back just, I'm that far as the house on the bottom on the expenses. The same $75, three times. I know it's only $75, I'm just, but so instead of just enter.
Yeah, one was entered wrong and we have to fix it. So two of them balance each other out with the other one is the correct one is the 1329-2025, check number 23628. That's the correct one. Because the first two balance each other out, one is minus, one is positive.
So that $75 went up somewhere, you entered it wrong, you corrected it, but it did go out someplace?
No, no, we, we were a check. But the check was made out wrong, the one amount we moved it, we moved it back in. It just got zeroed out, but we corrected it for the right amount, it was $75.
Was this part of the, when the checks were going out and there was issues with the ink and stuff?
Yes, that was one of those checks. I mean, if you want to, I can pull the voucher, I sent out that email.
So I think that, are we done with that one? Hopefully we've corrected that issue where we won't ever have the issue with checks going out there and not be allowed to move again. So I think we're good with that. With the ash tree, James was looking and I think we had asked how many more did we have left that we need to get removed?
And this was not, this one was not designed to be part of the rebate program.
It wasn't, and I see that down here and I'm kind of wondering.
This was.
No, it's not. This, this is, this ash tree was if it, if the homeowner put in eight. I think he has an ash tree to, to cover it.
It shouldn't come out of this capital fund.
Well, this, but ash tree should, it should, 226, that's something else, that's the
This was, this was set up for us to remove the city-owned ash trees that were the problem. As for the purpose of this capital fund, guys.
Yeah, so.
I looked, I looked this over and then get back to, I'm not sure that's the one, did you have a, you tell us to use to cut the check?
If I, if I may, I think there may have been some instances where the ash trees were in the city right-of-way. And maybe that was a reimbursement to business that had removed it. I know there were some incidents where the business owner removed it from the city right-of-way. Now whether that's a reimbursement for removing it from the city right-of-way, I don't know.
Right, John, and I get that, but that The purpose of the ash tree removal one was the one that were in parks and places?
Yeah, it seems like this one's similar to the sidewalk. Ones that we had were the sidewalk program we had and then the sidewalks that they had for DBW. And the accounts were getting crossed. And this potentially that this may be, I mean, we won't know until we get clarification, so.
Because is there, is there a tree removal account?
I think it's the 185.
That does the 50/50 splits? Like what if I, okay, so what if I have a maple tree? What, how does that come out?
185.
So I guess in my logic, this one came out of 185, not out of this.
Okay, I'll vote the budget, I can find out what, what was the reason why they wish to cut it in this one?
And when you.
And I, I said, I think JR, when they did the, they took the quote, the, what is the word? The number of ash trees, I think they included the ones in the city right-of-way as a part of their numbers.
I see what you're saying, I see what you're saying, yeah.
So I, so they may have used that money again, thinking that's a part of the ash tree count. I think we just need clarification.
Yeah, I'll vote the budget tomorrow.
That brings up a separate question. But, uh Because if that's the case and it was money allocated, then why are we charging them half the amount and counting it against that account? But back to yours, when you provide that explanation, can you please provide the, I don't know, description, definition of capital fund 226 and capital fund 185? The differences between the two?
226 is your, um.
I'll let you check, you check.
You mean 235?
226, 235, sorry.
That's why he didn't tell you 226, why?
Yeah.
Yeah, 235.
I literally wrote 226.
That's the one, right?
Yeah, 235, whatever 226, I don't remember what.
That's a several.
That's the side one, he just imagined 226.
Ah, there you go, there you go. Must have waited for it first. So definition between 235 and 185, sorry.
Okay.
That way we have a better understanding of the two, of their distinctions.
I would say really the only place we need that is as it relates to ash trees in the right, in the subway that are on private property.
Well, look at me, because trees in the subway city right-of-way is cities.
Well, in my mind, if we allocated money for that.
And I'm gonna go, burn it and say then why, if we, if we got that money there to go towards all of the ash tree removal, then why would they charge 50%?
As long as we, and I think we need to know, did we allocate for every ash tree that was in there? And if that's the case, I'm in agreement. I don't think, but we should have, because our parents, we take them all down, but we need to make sure that that count included, it was on private.
I think we also have a resolution for that, we can, I think we should also pull the resolution and find out what that was to.
Tiffany, will you pull that and send that to us, that resolution for the ash tree and what we, the appeal that we put in?
4624 resolution number?
Yeah, it just states to create ash tree. It doesn't have anything specified or not.
But the conversation.
I just pulled the conversation that will tell you like the number. I don't think it was ever specified by, I think, not even.
It was Robert.
Robert, I don't think Robert specified if they were in the right of way or not.
I think he just.
But I bet that James has that information because he has the inventory. So he can tell you if that number included just on city-owned property or if they also moved the right-of-way trees.
Because all he did was give us a number and he said, here's your number. So I guess we need to know if that number matches the tree number for how many we have the count that we're close. Does that make sense?
Yeah, so she needs a resolution and discussion.
Yes. Because I don't think we did, we had, I don't think, remember us having a discussion of where they were, but rather we had X number of trees. And so what'll tell us is how many trees did he tell us? And then how many trees are in the inventory there, I should tell.
It was talked about over like two, two meetings.
Yeah, I can hold up.
Yeah, it was talked about over a couple of meetings, if you remember.
Thank you, Tiffany. Brad?
Next one is Capital Project 236, communication, communication upgrades. That one is, phase one is done. I spoke with Brad this morning also. He said that phase two is to come. He will come to talk to you guys about phase two and how to fund it. So I don't know if you want to keep this in Capital Project open for phase two?
What communications is this?
The towers around the city, so they can communicate with each other. And I do remember him saying you were in multiple phases, but yeah.
Phase one is done. That's which is why we don't have any more money left, because we used whatever we had in there for phase one.
So probably should leave that open, just to wait for the city to come to us, what they want to do next. My suggestion.
Agreed.
And last one on the target for tonight is Capital Project 237. The Gargoyle Fire Training Facility. That one was created in 2023-24 fiscal year. And it was funded by council transfers for, from various line of dogs and different balance. Right now we have a balance of $6,092 in there. And I spoke to the fire chief this morning, he said that work is still ongoing as well.
So I'm thinking perhaps we could get an update on that, kind of what's what to do? Because I remember when we had that conversation, there were several areas that needed to be worked on. So I think if we, one, to make sure that we have adequate funding for the training facility there, but if we could get an update from the chief.
I spoke with him this morning too, he said that he will need more money. He will come and talk to you guys at some point down the line.
So that would be good down the line before budget, I'd say.
Because I think right now he said they don't need a house. They don't have too many people working on this project right now, that's why it takes so long.
Yeah, but I think if we know what the end result and goal is and what's needed, you know, see what can go into the budget and where we need to go from there, so.
Eric, I seem to recall the safety type they added to this, that they need to get some things updated to make it safer to train.
They worked on platforms and something along the roof, and I think, if I remember right, Eric said they did some of that. But there was quite a laundry list out there.
Yeah, yeah.
The roof, I think on the Elmore Training Center. Some pressure, there was a laundry list of items.
So it would be good to have an update on that there.
So is that going with public safety or city ops? Maybe we'd be forced to choose hand, but put it out for the beginning of next year, that'll give the rest of this month and.
I'm good with either one, I had talked to Eric and some of that stuff, so whatever, city ops.
Because I think then that gives us, you know, as we're planning for the budget and stuff, what we need to be looking forward to.
So tell us, you have a.
Okay, anything else on capital funds? New for us for consideration, we have credit card payment process.
I think you guys, this, yesterday, and I was with the CBOG today. For fiscal year 2024-25, the city used $75,000 total for credit card processing fees and for customers. So since we're switching bank now from five-star to community bank, and we have to get new credit card machines. They told us that we could pass the fees to the customers instead of have the city pay for the fees. And if you look at it, that's $75,000 a year. If we could pass that to the customer, I think that's a good idea to do it, if we want to save costs for the city. Since we're making the movement from one to the next, we could do it in one shot.
What are these, I'm sorry, what are these fees for again?
Processing fees.
Yeah, for, so any, because I remember we passed that on in water or sewer or something.
That was something else for end code.
Okay.
For online payments?
Yes.
Do you pay like a dollar for online?
Yes.
Yes.
That covers the entire. Alderman.
We talked about this last year, and I think we, there was questions on whether or not the belief was that New York State had passed a law that said you can't pass credit card fees on to customers.
You can, however, you have to make it clear in the bill that said get sent out to them. If your bill's $20 and your credit card processing fee is a dollar fifty, you have to make it clear that if you pay with a credit card, you're paying $21.50, not $20.
I believe they said you could have a cash price and.
Yes, cash, the cash price and credit card, yes.
Well, regardless, I mean, we had the conversation last year, we said it would need to be looked at, so I would encourage you to talk to Bridgette. To see that.
And what, what percentage does that end up to be to tack on to the bill? Because I know I go someplace and it's 3.99%, sometimes it's 1.5%.
It's about 3% for us.
It's just whatever their power serves you either.
Right. But it would be nice to know for what it is, but yeah, I mean, if we have water and sewer, we do it as a debit draft, which is kind of crazy for me to pay a dollar, but I get that there's cost to the city, so I think we do it that way. It's easy and honestly, a stamp is 78 cents, so I think it's 78 cents.
I have no idea because I'm gonna be one of those that's gonna end up paying this extra percentage, so, because we do everything online.
Yeah.
I encourage. Is there a fee for linking to bank or can you not link your bank?
You could actually do a bank draft, you would give us a cancelled, a voided check. And we have the application at the court's office and we'll also have it online and Jared would put that in, they'll, you pay zero fee for it.
So you can't do it online, they'll just connect. Connect your checking account versus doing your debit account, you should, so it comes directly out of the check.
He's asking like, I know where you don't pay the W, they, ACH.
Yeah, the E check, yeah.
I put my checking there, I remember, and it takes it out.
Jared, did you, what did you, do you?
I believe you have that option, you can put in the bank information, but you don't have the option to choose when it pulls. We just do it on, it's like on or around the 15th of the month, as well with the actual paper and canal. But it's, it's totally free though.
And then there's no fees?
There's no fee that way.
Oh, for water and sewer?
Yep.
Huh?
For anything with the E check.
Well, that's with the public, you know?
That's something I think we're gonna have to revisit.
Why, why do you want to do it like 15th, why don't they do it more periodically?
It's a, basically we, the file's created once a month, like right after the bills are created. It creates a file with all the accounts in it, and we upload it once a month. It's not something where we can, we, we don't have the option to like create the file over and over. It basically just lumps all the accounts in there. And usually like I'll, I'll submit the file on the 13th, so it comes out on the 15th. That way it, it comes out before the penalties get put on it. But it's, basically, and we're talking 700 accounts a month that are doing this. And it's like $60,000 a month for that. And it's, it would just be brutal to try to come up with a way, well, I really don't think you can do it, there's, there's no way you. Basically, when you do the water bills, it puts everything in a packet that you can come, create the file and submit to your bank. So it's, you can't do it several, several times a month.
So Lenz, is this something that we're looking to make whole prior to the end of the next fiscal? So that we can move forward with the new bank?
Well, we have to replace our credit card machine from five-star to community. And we'll, we have to get them replaced and, and they give us the action, the action to do it that way or we could do it the other way. Still hit the cost. It will be costly, but if that's what we want to do, we have to, we have to do something. Because right now, oh, we have money going to community bank and some going to five-star bank. And I want to centralize everything in one bank. Which is why I wanted to, to get the blessing before everything, as far as anybody comes, and it goes.
This is where we need setting council members. Because our three opinions may differ from the others.
And John's?
Yeah, and John's.
Four of us here, you chose that one to give us.
Um, personally, I would hate to try to recoup this off of everyone under this budget. That's just my personal opinion. We do need to recoup it, how, I don't have any suggestions right now, this is something I have to think about. But it's something that needs to be worked into next year's budget and then worded, just as it was. And Tiffany had mentioned that we can't, and Jared mentioned, we can't pass it on to the customers. However, if we provide that disclaimer and then say, if you do choose to use that credit card, then you will be charged this amount and not the lower amount. If that is the way you get around it, but at the same time, you know, people always say, we pay taxes, blah, 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 but the city can't operate for free. We have to recoup this money, we have to be able to function and operate. And this is a $70,000 hindrance, so that's just my opinion.
Yeah, I agree, Bridgette. I think this is the, the way to start doing it is to build it into next year's budget, we're coming up on that process. And I, I do agree with everyone else that this is a cost. There are free options that are, you can show up at the, and pay it in person at the city clerk's office. If you want to pay a stamp, you can mail it in. Any restaurant you go to anymore, everyone tacks on the credit card fee. And so this is just an additional example of that, that, you know, is a necessity as everyone moves to paying their, their bills online. So I, I think that it's just part of doing business and I think we should look at that in the budget process.
As, as John's right, it's part of the business, so if that's the case, then you would have thought that you would have just adjusted your water rate and sewer rates accordingly to account for it.
But this is more his water and sewer rate.
Or is it Jason? That's the main call for it.
Yeah.
So is October, is that where, so we have taxes, I mean, the highest ones probably where we see it is when taxes are paid on.
It's only in May, that's when you get most people pay their taxes. And then most people with credit cards to pay it, because it's, we get the cost for them and they get points on their credit cards.
Oh, got you. Well, that's a good point too, that people do get points and kind of things sometimes, so it kind of balances out. So, okay, what I'm hearing is, and, and I think, Lenz, if you could look into for us, you know, what the cost will be, building it into next year and letting them know that we're looking to do something in the next year with this, with the next year's budget.
Do we know by chance how many customers this little thing, that it can be a credit card?
It's gonna be a lot. I have to look it up, it's gonna be a lot. Because most, most people pay for water, water and sewer online, which is why you see the waters. On the right-hand side is the water and sewer. Because the water is about 55,000, because it's the general funding that were 80,000, for the year, so.
So why is it so high then in October compared to the other months? I mean, it's in both of them, so that's kind of, I mean, we, we're averaging, you know, 300 at the highest, 50 at the lowest, and that's like a 509 and a 674. I mean, so there's something happening in that one.
The electricity and air.
When you make the fees for the water to our fund, if someone has a water bill on their taxes, that's accounted for there, right? Because this is October, the last month, and you can pay your city taxes. So it's probably because everyone's paying their taxes last month.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking it was, the other ones are pretty consistent on the other side.
Yeah, and the only anomaly there is for some reason those months are higher, American Express usage.
Yeah.
Every other month is the same, it's literally just, the only anomaly is somebody's using a big American Express.
Yeah, other than that March, I think March in that one, there is two, but, yeah. So, and people will still have the option of putting in about bank routing and having it for free.
Yep.
Which is reasonable. I mean, I don't use my credit card, but this is for a credit card and debit, right? So we need to use our, okay. Any other discussion on this?
This needs to come back to council so we can discuss the rates, the update, what the rates would be, how many customers are gonna be affected.
So do we want to revisit this, the first meeting in January?
Depending on what, depending on what else you've got going on. We can say our first meeting in January quite a bit, so.
If you're comfortable with legal opinion, you've already received, we can, if you want to wait for, if you want a legal opinion, I would suggest you wait until the second meeting in January.
Okay, second week of Jan, second meeting of January works.
So now my question though, should, should we keep it as it is right now?
Yes, keep it, my, I, it seems like we're all in agreement, keep it as it is, look to build that, um, into the next year's budget. Contingent upon the information for that.
And we'll have to figure out how to pay the issues.
Okay, thanks Lance, and then we had the Buckle Street underpass RFP, but.
I don't know where James is.
That's okay.
We're trying to find him, but.
Well, I am sure that he is doing something that needs to be done, and he did give us, so.
No, like he did not, I mean, he did not say.
Yeah.
But he did provide an RFP.
Yeah.
Do you have that one?
They recommend that project be ordered CP board in the amount of four hundred and sixty two thousand five hundred dollars. They, um, they have three hundred and seventy seven thousand four hundred and eight dollars and sixty one cents in the capital fund. And in addition to the construction costs, the city will be responsible for supplying pumps and controls, quoted a hundred and eighteen thousand four hundred and ninety eight dollars.
So a hundred and sixty two thousand five hundred with recommendations for CP ward in it, that way you would also be utilizing a hundred and eighteen thousand four hundred and ninety eight dollars by purchasing pumps and controls, so that puts us, have you been doing the math over there, Vernon?
No, right there.
Eighty nine and eighty.
Okay.
So, about a hundred thousand dollars less than what's in the fund.
Comments, questions?
I right now.
Okay. I'm gonna put this on tentatively and then, um, have, uh, James, he'll be at the next meeting, so we'll tentatively put this through. Um, are you okay with that, James? Okay. And then we'll discuss if there's anything left that are. Looking for something?
Um, I was told he was going to be here on Tuesday, but I don't see him off himself.
Oh, James?
Yep.
No, there's only three, there's three.
Oh, let's see.
The three is sending us, John and Karen, the three women that you see.
Okay. That's okay, we'll, we'll talk some when, when it comes up. Okay, committee of reports, we have none, I'll make a motion for adjournment, I have a second, my opinion on favor, opposed.
All right, I'll order the Public Safety Committee for December second, uh, love the ready show, are all present or present, exception of Anna Stager, very important. Uh, Carrie is present, but, uh, not acting president. Uh, I'll make a motion, approve the minutes, can you get a second?
Second.
Second, by my call, all in favor, all right, opposed. Uh, unfinished business, we have the North Union Street lighting, which, uh, we were provided, uh, a letter from the DPW director, uh.
Did you need a word?
Say it.
Oh, you got it.
Yep. Yep, yeah, I don't plan on reading all of this, but, uh, uh, the lighting design is going to be three phases, uh, phase one will be street lighting improvements, uh, changing the luminaires, uh, from eighty luminaires to eighty five, they anticipate. Uh, phase two will be the pedestrian lighting improvements, uh, that's on the sidewalk side, uh, possibly bothered lights, uh, to, and spacing between them. Uh, possible lights, uh, custom fabricated to be added to the existing streetlight poles and possibly pedestrian height poles, uh, with independent streetlights. Uh, and then phase three, decorative lighting, uh, this will involve, uh, greater only in area, Chamber of Commerce, Commerce in the design of the new decorative lighting display, uh, and then plan to use some services, uh, collaborate with them. And then there is the procurement and installation aspect of funding will have to be identified, that'll be an important part, involves the council. Uh, then installation of the selected improvements could be done either in-house or by contractor. Uh, I can tell you now, the way we have been waiting for the one park, I would eliminate the in-house and move to a contractor, that's just my opinion. Uh, and then, uh, that is it, I don't see any costs associated here, so I guess he is still working on that. So I guess we will have to put this back on, uh, Public Safety for when the DPW director is present. Uh, I'm sure he will get word, but I guess now we're just kind of looking for a quote for all of this, unless there's any other questions on this?
Good, so my question is, if we're doing three phases and phase three is a new decorative lighting design, then why do we still leave the debt on tangling across North Union Street?
Because there was a veto that was upheld.
I just.
There was one time, gee, it just doesn't seem very logical, I mean, it's kind of like, like before you grab.
I think you're preaching to the choir with us.
Yeah, I, I want to make sure that, uh, even though this is stated in three phases, that this remains three separate POs.
That is correct, that is what the intention is.
We want to make sure that that stays three separate POs.
And therefore, as we get it, to have your different kind of cost analysis.
Yes.
I guess my point being was, is that the veto was, is to rehab the ones that are there, but that was city veto. Now the letter from the city is telling us that there'll be a new design.
So let's put it on for the first meeting in January to revisit it.
Do we visit North Union Street lighting?
Yes.
And then a new PL in the second meeting?
We can move to the second meeting.
No, I'm talking about JR's, applies PL to the second.
Excuse me?
No.
No, yeah, just.
I didn't hear you, I was cursing.
No, I only wanted to reintroduce your PL after the first year.
Oh, do you want to reintroduce your PL after the first of the year?
Sure, just because I'm a dick.
What he meant is that he thinks that that would be good for us to revisit and see what the feeling is at that point.
Oh, my goodness.
What is the temperature for the council then? Okay, oh, now my committee, go ahead.
I am, still, I need a second. That would make sense, that, that doesn't make sense.
Well, we wouldn't need.
Okay, uh, I take it there's no other questions on that, once we're moving on, uh, shared use path, uh, plowing under new considerations? Uh, who's this?
That was me, I think.
Okay.
So, after talking to the downtown businesses, and I think Jared had brought it up before too, I think you may have also learned that the city made this choice to put these shared use paths in, that, um, are larger sidewalks. And I actually would like to see us follow the downtown area too for the merchants for a number of reasons. Um, among those is that there's no real place for the merchants to, to place their snow, that, um, there are a number of empty storefronts that are not cared for. And then the shared use happen, I, I think that we do a disservice to the residents who live there if we expect them to clear this when it was a city project.
Yep, JR.
I know, but I brought it up, and I think if I remember right, John was with me in this conversation, John, correct me if I'm wrong. But some of that too was brought up because the codes call for repair and maintenance and replacement to also be on the back of the property owners, and what I said back then was now a ten foot wide sidewalk, some of these people have two and a half times the financial burden sitting outside of their homes. John, is that above correct what we discussed back then? And also, and I'm sure that the city workers wouldn't be excited about that because of the manpower, but should have been considered before that went in there, so, I mean, it was kind of in there now, and now we have to deal with it, so it was kind of, I don't want to say ill conceived, it's nice, but something has to be done, I mean, that's a lot of, a lot of work on people, that's a lot of liability on them, you know, extra liability for slip and falls, extra maintenance, extra everything.
I agree with that, I, I, I think the city should, should provide some assistance, uh, with that, I mean, I don't see a problem with, I know we'll have to get with the DPW director on that. But, I mean, we just made a purchase last week for four by four with plow attachment and salt, I don't see why it would be difficult to just drive down the downtown district and take care of that, I mean, hell, when I had my four wheeler plow, I enjoyed doing it at my house, so I'll see where, yeah. And we have an old one that's retired, it was previously with, uh, with DPW, so, uh, New York State DOT, so.
I'd say other communities do things, but the Village of Allegheny actually has a sidewalk plow that they zoom around, and I believe all the sidewalks.
And I'm not saying to take care of all those.
Right, I'm not saying that either.
You know, just those shared use path areas, uh, that, that, that they claim to when we advertise, uh, when we talk about the purification process that, that occurred in Oregon, uh, I, I think they should be, you know, share the usage, share the responsibility and help follow these.
And, and to JR's point, I think that we should consider looking at the ordinance about sidewalks and then revising it for whatever we think is fair for the shared use paths for the city responsibility.
That was part of the discussion, if you remember, it got referred out to a small committee of, uh, Jason Panis, myself, and Ben Slotman. And that was one of the things that we were working on with the right away conversations. And I know James has been kind of learning, but I mentioned it before that that committee has not met, and I did mention that, so I think that's just a matter of getting that, that one once, the holidays.
So you, so, I'm assuming JR, Jason's not participating anymore, so, uh, do you want, does somebody else need to participate in that?
I mean, yeah, I mean, it was just, I mean, I don't know, basically, that, so. So, I mean, we have quite a few things we stacked up in January, and then shortly after that, we'll be looking at budget, so.
That wasn't done, that, so we just, that was an off committee, that was meeting and bringing things back.
Right, so what I was thinking was that, that we can push revisiting this out to, I don't know, sometime in the first, or was that, that's actually considered third quarter of the fiscal, and then that will give you an opportunity, uh, whenever you have an opportunity to talk to, uh, DPW director, get some type of update, and then we can bring it back to the council and discuss that, and if we need to make changes to that PO prior to next year.
And if it's all the same, maybe Simon would like to replace.
I mean, that's Jason.
Sure.
No, I believe that, that was assigned, I think that, how'd that work?
Oh, no, was, was that assigned by the mayor? I don't think it was.
I think you just said.
No.
Yeah.
There's a sign, I think the council, John, doesn't the council president sign for small committees? Or we, how do we?
I think you just decided. I don't think it was official committee.
Yeah.
I think you decided to do what it says.
And like Jen and Sonia led the.
Just in the heart.
We just, yeah.
Yeah.
So. I would love to, um, but I want to make sure the plowing doesn't go to the spring, and the other thing I would say is that if we're talking about a potential cost for sidewalks, that we want to make sure that that's built into the budget too, if we anticipate any cost to it over this next year, hopefully not, because they're all new, but I saw somebody posted up a picture of like a broken piece of a sidewalk, so something to think about, or at least for DPW to think about as they build their budget, is do they need to put something in, potentially for that?
Well, they already have money set aside for stuff like that, but then, uh, I mean, those employees are already working, so there's no.
Money set aside for other?
Their salaries.
Oh, they're, she was on sidewalk repairs, that's like.
They're sidewalk repairs, the DPW has a line item for that, I thought.
That's only for their city owned sidewalks, they never accounted for money to replace privately owned, now shared use. So there is no money allocated to that, that kind of thing.
Yeah, I see what you mean.
The discussion needs to include Bridgette too, because, right, we, what if there's some damage to the property, right? And part of why I had brought up the plowing and, and we had talked about that and different things is, it was, well, geez, liability, liability, liability. So we need to make sure we take care of that, however, in the winter, I would like us to do something and maybe we can ask James if just in the interim, now that we have this wonderful side by side with a plow on it, if we can follow the downtown area, um, and see if that is manageable to help out our businesses.
Just the downtown or any shared use side?
Well, shared use and downtown.
I'm thinking shared use. Why don't we see shared use?
Because this is considered shared use sidewalk, correct?
You mean in front of the city building?
I think the phase one, phase two, phase three, and phase four are all considered shared use.
John, city center is not considered shared use sidewalk, correct, since there's a law, a law that, or code or whatever that says you can't ride a bike, there is no shared use, that's just a pedestrian walk, yes.
Yeah.
So then you would need to encapsulate to say shared use and city center.
Yeah. That would look.
Yeah, that's what I would like to do.
Shared use and city center.
And then, John, not to be, is it city center downtown district because of that no bikes extends down?
If you do city center, that's, um, according to zoning, it goes down part of this, part of.
State.
State, part of Wayne.
Okay, that's what I was asking, make sure we're presenting the white goes down that way.
Yes, so you're including that and like down in front of the school and.
Yes.
Like towards that way?
Now, now we're going too far.
Or do you just want to do North Union Street?
I want to do North Union Street to the railroad tracks.
What about the other businesses?
Why, that's what I was just gonna say, I mean, not to play, but to play devil's advocate, if I own Manny's Flowers, why are you gonna?
Oh, wait, I would like to do, I mean, to Seventh Street then, to Seventh Street and then to the bridge. So to the bridge on East State, to Seventh Street, right? Because those are the chair of our, our, um, local businesses and then Union Street to this.
That's not, that hasn't been done yet though.
What?
From the post office to Seventh Street, we haven't started that, that's not shared yet.
None of that's shared, right, she's doing that because it's the downtown business district.
Okay, none of that's shared, you're just gonna ride bikes. Right, but if we say, say, I just want to make sure we're, we're not going crazy here.
Right, and then it's.
My recommendation is, I mean, we don't have to decide that tonight, right, we can establish, just like we were talking about with the parking committee, we can establish what, what is the, what is the district that we would like to see paved, or not paved, but plowed and salted, uh, I think we're all in agreement. I, I just recommend we put together a, you know, kind of outline what we're looking to have, um, and work with the incoming mayor to, to see it act.
I can go with that one, uh, I, I think, uh, this is going to be something similar to when we did the parking, I think the council can input their thoughts on that area that we're looking to cover, and then we can discuss again, uh, later day.
Right, but we don't want to go to March.
Right.
I think that's the point, she was looking for a faster resolution, not waiting till January or September, so I think, I think it's what you guys just defined as city center. And all shared use sidewalks.
I mean, if you say city center, you're gonna have to cut back on something, because you're now, as she said, you're touching on schools property now.
What I would like to, I would recommend is that you go from. What I would like to, I would recommend is that you go from, um, the corner of State and Union to, to the railroad tracks. And then, you know, down to Seventh Street on West State and over to the bridge. That takes care of shared use paths and part of it, and then the, uh, a number of the small businesses on, as you mentioned, like, you know, these sort of stuff down there. I mean, I get that we can't do all of it, but if we can do a portion of it for the businesses, I think that'll go a long way.
I, I even, if you're doing just to the tracks, you have to pick up at the fire department? And then skip Pizza Hut and then go around because that's walkable phase two, and that's a shared use path, so you're like.
I mean, to the tracks by the mall.
Right, so we wouldn't do the mall.
Right.
We have to go and pass the mall, pass Big Lots, we pick up at the fire department.
I wasn't looking to go that far, I was literally.
Right, oh, no, I'm just saying, we, we pick up the fire department, then we pick up at the end of the street going down Main Street. So you just wanna exclude that.
Fire department plows the wrong sidewalk.
Oh, sure. We just, we would then have to pick up our.
I see what you're saying, but the fire department does the wrong sidewalk.
Yeah, we just pick up our, pick up the plow and drive along to Main Street.
I think what we need to do is just specify the streets north, south, east, and west.
Okay.
And my suggestion, I, I wrote down, uh, from Henley Street of South Union to the circle, uh, that covers the south, uh, Wayne Street, North Union, that covers the north. Uh, Seventh Street, East State, I'm sorry, that'd be West State. That's a W. And then East State will lead to the bridge. However, the city owns the park, so would they just continue?
The city already does too.
So they, same.
The city already does the other side, cause there's on both sides.
Okay.
So it goes to, uh, front you.
So it doesn't need to be mentioned then, okay?
Yeah, so that covers what I was looking.
That's what you're looking for, so that, that's something that would have to be incorporated and, uh, get written up and presented as a PO.
Can you?
With a start date.
Of tomorrow.
Did you have anything on Main Street?
Nothing on me. Were your instructions gonna come back next week and say we want ours plowed too, does that ever happen?
No, wait, we'll talk about where the, everywhere the shared use paths are.
Right.
Right?
That's why I just said, if you negate that.
You negate the whole shared use path, are you? Yeah. That's the, that's what I said, this is a bigger conversation because you can literally start expanding to other areas, so.
Let's just be clear, I just want the downtown business district that has asked and has had multiple issues with business, oh, with shops that are not, um, utilized, shoveling, they don't have a place to put their snow, so I am literally looking to give some relief to our downtown businesses. Now, we could add shared use paths at a number, another point, but literally that's what I want at this moment.
But this conversation, this agenda as shared use path plowing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It was deliberately put on for the shared use.
Share use.
Not downtown district.
Right, so, we can revisit it and as part of a larger conversation and come to circle back to the downtown business district.
So that means we need to still define the shared use part because.
Can we just get a list of all sidewalks that are declared a shared use path right now?
We're gonna have to write down what we think and then present it and then go from there.
Cause I like John.
I know, John's up there smiling, yeah. I'm about to.
To the Main Street.
Can we just get a list of an email?
Yeah.
Yes, do a list of an email, and, uh, hopefully the other old persons can do the same and get something in, and then we can go from there, uh, the shared use, uh.
And then when we revisit it, it'll say shared use and downtown and business district, let's say business district.
And just so we, I give you guys something to think about, because I have to play devil's advocate, not saying that I'm against it, but the city downtown district where those areas have been redone, their sidewalks have not been increased. So they've always had that burden versus this section up here, uh, whichever way we're facing here, heading up East State, uh, going towards the bridge where some of those areas have been increased, now have a larger burden, and South Union where they have a larger burden. Those areas are the ones that I tend to think, okay, the city created this, so maybe we should assist with that.
Absolutely.
That's a greater conversation or a larger conversation that I think should be had with, with all of this, but.
Have to look to a different code for repair replacement in this area.
Yeah.
There might be a different code.
A lot of things to cover, a lot of things to cover, and we're gonna need the city attorney on this one too. So, uh, Tiffany, can we put this one back on and, uh, do we wanna do this in two weeks? In two weeks, we're gonna have, uh, potentially the regular meeting too, so. Uh, it's gonna be a long night, December sixteenth. Uh, but, I guess we'll have to put it on if you want this done, so, yeah, we'll put it on. Public safety for the sixteen.
Why, just don't want to have to wait until go and.
Yeah.
Like we are.
I'm good with it. I'm good with that, so I think John is good, uh, so, nothing else there, got a lot to think about, have a lot of homework on that one. Uh, moving on, approval of committee reports, we have none. Uh, I'll make a motion to adjourn public safety, made a second by Ben, all in favor?
Aye.
I oppose, return.
Um, I'll call the worker strategic fighting for Tuesday, December second. But the record shows that all older men are present with the exception of older woman forty. Um, make a motion to approve minutes, the previous mini meeting held Tuesday, November the fourth, okay, your second?
Second.
Second by Aldo, uh, Aldo and Ben, all in favor?
Aye.
I oppose unfinished chrome business, we've got a conference of needs report to the municipal building. Um, that was one of the, uh, documents included from Director Spray, uh, and pretty, pretty lengthy, um, kind of evaluation of the city building needs. Um, I'll kinda just briefly touch on the summary of it, which I thought I had, there is. Um, so, besides kind of listing all the, the history of what he found and who was working on what, you know, a couple of the, just, and the figures that were included in this, uh, on two different occasions. Um, a company Stark Tech, uh, came up with an estimate of about four million dollars worth of work. Uh, another one with the exclusion of heat pumps was around two point six million dollars. Um, and so at the conclusion, Director Spray recommends that the municipal building, um, that we should pursue an architect, uh, and possibly, um, combine it with the city garage, um, overhaul. Uh, that there might be some savings to, to get an architect to combine both projects, um, to hire one firm to do both of them. Uh, and the, being a bigger project, um, might, you know, uh, get the interest of more architects, um, from different firms that might end up actually getting us a better price. Uh, and so, I would suggest, uh, that we put this back on, uh, that we, in the new year, and, um, pursue the next steps on putting out an RFP to get some architects. I mean, I, I think sooner rather than later, we need to start knowing some of these figures and numbers, and, uh, what the actual needs are and the designs. Um, and, uh, because a lot of, I think he also references the, you know, the possibility that we could be missing out on some different grants. Um, if we just keep working on it on one offs, we could have been missing opportunities to coordinate activities, to receive significant improvement, um, and, and kind of efficiencies. Uh, this is definitely a part of the long range plan, and, um, I would suggest that we, we move on, get an architect on board. Any comments, questions?
Uh, John?
Um, yeah, Aldo and Robinson.
I just wanted to add, uh, of all the notes, there were four pages of notes, and the part that I wanted on record was the partners, Department of, uh, Public Works director mentioned that, uh, just to summarize this, the municipal building is only one of multiple facilities that the city of Olomone owns and operates, and that they all need repairs and upgrading, so we need to keep that in mind with, if we're looking to do, uh, six point eight million in, uh, improvements here, that, yeah, that's a lot of money, and we have other buildings that also need upgrading. Uh, basically, the city has gotten old and there's, there's no, little to no improvement, uh, to these buildings. So we need to, that's a project for mayor elect.
Yeah.
And, and the current council, uh, so, that's something to keep in mind.
See if we're working on.
No, I, um, no, I, I completely agree, and I don't want it to make it sound that because we're hiring an architect that we're prioritizing the city building, I think we all know that the priority is the city garage, um, at this point. Uh, but if there are some cost savings to get an architect, you know, to at least, if, if, uh, we don't know what we don't know, um, we've got some of those prices on the city building, uh, but if it's worth exploring, uh, an architect's true design, uh, for both, if there's some potential cost savings in going that route, then, then I think it's worthwhile exploring. Um, but, but I'm in agreement, I, I think it's really gonna come down to a, how do we prioritize? And, and also, just to piggyback on, a lot of times, we've all seen that, um, projects that are shovel ready tend to be better suited to get grants, um, and we've benefited from that on a number of occasions too, so. Um, for what it's worth, but I would like to, uh, request this, this put back on. Uh, again, I, I know we've got a lot coming up on, on the agenda with the budget and everything, but these are, uh, these are critical needs that continue to get, uh, kicked down the road, um, so, I think sooner rather than later, I'm open to suggestions.
Uh, personally, I think the sooner for obtaining an ar- architect. And, uh, again, making a garage a priority, uh, and then looking for grants needs to be the bigger priority. If there's something there that we can put in for, uh, then we need to act on it and, and do what we can to work with the city to, to get that going.
Yeah.
So can we just give us some direction to Director Spray on what we're looking for, kind of? Ask for that rather than kind of.
Sure.
Kind of get out of, yeah?
I mean, is everybody, I, I guess, I, we, we don't have a, everybody here, is everybody in agreement that that's the direction we should head? Just give, give James back, James that feedback and ask him to build out an RFP for the first quarter?
I think it's a faster timeline, yeah?
Yep.
Agreed.
I agree.
Okay.
So you'll communicate that, or?
Yeah, yeah. Um, what, do you have, does anyone have a timeline they would like to see? Is the first quarter acceptable, or do we wanna?
So I think that one of the things that James said is the sooner we get an RFP out, that we get ahead of some of the others that are looking to have similar type, um, architects and drawings and stuff, so the, the sooner we give him that feedback and he can get it out perhaps in that first quarter, that I think would be great.
Okay.
Probably a good job.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, okay, I'll, I'll talk to him and communicate that, thank you.
And then, just before you move on, isn't some of the requirements for most of the grants, uh, showing that there's commitment to doing it? Not getting the grant first and then committing?
Yeah, yeah, usually, usually it's that, it's, yeah, um, you don't get the grant without showing that you've made forth an effort to, again, usually if it's, if you're shovel ready, right, so if you have an architectural design, then you stand at a higher place in the pecking order. That was one of the benefits we had, you know, with, um, trying to think whether it was West State Street or, uh, the pool, um, to a variety of. Okay, uh, I'll talk to James about that. Um, nothing further, we got a new referral for consideration, public comment, so that's Aldo and Robinson.
So, just wanted us to revisit this, um, I think we talked about wanting to have public participation, we want people to come to the meeting, we wanna hear what they say, and then they have to wait, oh, hours sometimes too, and depending if we combine meetings all the way till then, and so I want us to revisit that piece. Um, what I did is, um, you guys should have the resolution, I think John worked on this with Tiffany, and I'm not married to this, but taking a look and saying, you know, what makes sense? And I know I talked to, um, Aldo and Benyon about, you know, ideally, people should, they give the, they know what's on our agenda, they're able to see that, and they know we're gonna be voting on, on items, so they should get an opportunity to have their say prior to us voting on those items. Not then we vote it and then they're like, well, geez, you know, this is what I thought about it. Or they, you know, I just think that we need to rework it, um, and go back, there's, I mean, I have no issues with the three minutes, I have no minute issues with, with a lot of the, the things that are in here, but I wanted to just kinda take our temperature on seeing how everybody felt about, um, revising this. And the other thing is I do think it's good to have information out that says, this is the expectation when you come to the meeting, right? Um, now, when I tell people about public comment, I'll say to them, well, I don't know, you could be there thirty minutes, an hour, you know, so, and when people have some difficulty, sometimes they can't be there for two hours before it's time for them to speak, or they have that opportunity. So I just wanted to put it out there for us to take a look at, and then maybe look at this potential resolution, make some adjustments to it, and see what everybody thought.
JR.
Okay, does it, oh, sorry, JR, um, Aldo and Ben?
That's all right, I was trying to move to, um, I agree with Sonia, you know, I believe that it should go back in front, so that way they can speak and then it might change. In reading that, I don't wanna pile that, the only thing, we can't guarantee time, cause I think the one night when you do exactly the session that lasted almost an hour, you wanna opt me the whole, so the timeline's bad, just sort of the matter of, you know, I did support changing it to the end, um, the, uh, sorry, I'll read it out, but I got distracted.
The chat feature.
But then it should come up before, because they're gonna talk about something that's voted on in the past. We did that, I supported it, I was wrong, it shouldn't, it should be be- before that. The only part that I don't agree with is while I agree with the possibility of a signing sheet, I think that that was written and says that it should, and, um, they would have to sign in before committee of the whole starts. I think that they should have the opportunity to sign in until public comment starts, just because sometimes they might hear something sitting there, we've had that happen where they come up and then say, I wasn't gonna speak, would you guys talk about this, and then they decide to. But, you know, I think that it's, it's not like we don't, typically, we don't give all lines of people on our normal course of business to, to talk. It's not gonna really kill us to sit there and listen to the people that we represent. I do think that we should be better about getting names and locations beforehand and kind of making that, and if that signing sheet accomplishes that, I'm good with it, I just think, just give them the opportunity to sign in until public comment starts.
Hey, uh, John?
Yeah, Aldo and Robinson.
Uh, just, uh, so, to Carrie, Aldo and Carrie stated, uh, in, in the text that I have always felt that giving the public a right to comment before we vote is essential. Uh, and I agree with that, uh, however, and it's a big however, uh, when we think about how we got into that predicament in the first place, uh, you're talking about something that was a one-off, it was something that, uh, happened that, uh, should not have happened. But, when you look at our positions, and I say this all the time, we are all full-time employees, full-time professionals. Uh, we are here kind of voluntarily, uh, but that volunteering comes, for me anyway, with a past tense. Uh, I cannot be here all day, I cannot be here all night. I run a multi-million dollar organization, I work for a multi-million dollar organization. I cannot dedicate my entire night to the council. Um, with that, when we have these long budget meetings, it, it gets drawn out, it gets long, we're all fatigued, tired, you know, we're constantly talking, thinking, working, trying to figure out the best way to, to, to help our, our city residents, you know, with our decision-making. with our decision-making for the tax increases and so forth. When it comes to the public comment, putting it back in front, it's fine, we can very well do that. We can vote in an honest way to do that, right? But if we do that and then we have another incident happen and then the floodgates open, we can have a long list of people, we're not saying, oh, we're going to limit to X amount. We're just saying now, put it on paper who you are and what you want to talk about. So we can end up with multiple people here in one night and literally take up the entire portion or an entire night with comments. But we have not conducted the business that we volunteered to do. So we will sit here and then after everyone is done talking and move on. Now we're here another hour or two to conduct business. And as you can see, tonight should have been, I don't know, half hour tops. We're already out to the end on the little bit that we have on our agenda. So we can potentially set ourselves up for issue down the road. No, granted, like I said, it was a one off, it was just a one off. Hopefully you never hope anything like that happens again. But another opportunity, another strategy was something that was discussed where if we had better planning of how our agendas were put together, then we wouldn't have this issue in the first place. Because the agendas were come out, we can discuss, committee can come in and speak to it, and then we vote on another, on a later. Because then that gives the council opportunity to absorb what was said by those people in the audience, to those constituents that on other cases, because you can write in, which we don't get, you can call, which some of us get. So it's not like we're limiting our comment to just coming in. If I'm not mistaken, there was a lot of people that said, hey, we want to be able to write in, we want to be able to call. That information is out there, it's on the city website, it's on most of our social media pages and stuff like that. So I don't think we're handicapped to just moving it back and saying, okay, we're done. I think there's other methods that could be handled and that still does not handicap us when, if something happens and then we're crippled by sitting here and waiting. Because I know there is a couple of times, let me just be honest about it, there were a couple of times when we had those meetings and I was ready to just get up and leave because I did not want to be here until ten o'clock. I have to get up at five in the morning and I have a lot to. So that's my spiel, I just wanted to mention that. Sorry, I got anything else? John?
So, yeah, thanks.
Oh, sure, sorry.
Thanks. So I guess I would be, you know, first of all, I'll start off with, so far, so good. I think, I think it's worth giving the way it's structured a try. So far, it has been working to Sanya's point. And I want to just make sure to talk about her point, her concern. Really, you know, when we're talking about making people, asking them to wait two hours, moving it from one point to another point in the regular meeting really isn't going to make a huge difference, right? What does that is when we would have our summer sessions and we double up all of the committee meeting and ahead of the committee of the whole and the regular meeting. So I think some of the frustration, and if that's not something the council wishes to do, then we shouldn't have summer hours and we should meet, you know, four times a month. And that will help to reduce the waiting time. So really, if you move it from one point to another point in the regular meeting itself, you're probably saving, I mean, we've flown through the regular meeting pretty quick, so ten minutes. But I think it's important to keep the agenda on track. I think it's beneficial that when public comment occurs at the end of a meeting, it allows the board to do what we're there to do, we're there to conduct business. Certainly, hearing from the residents is a part of that business. But we need to have multiple different avenues of transparency and communication that if a resident, you know, as we've all got emails and phone calls or stopped at the grocery store to hear people's opinions. I don't think I've ever heard there's a shortage of ways to communicate with us. But I like the fact that it keeps our business on track. It allows us to make decisions without undue pressure. So, you know, this way it kind of avoids flip-flopping at the last minute. We obviously do our due diligence, we discuss it. But it also, this is a key part for me, is I think it helps to establish that the public comment, that the public is actually informed on what we do in our business. Many of us now have been here a while, you know, and in the nine years I've seen plenty of public comment where they get up, they speak for their, you know, five minutes, and then they walk out and they don't even partake or understand what we actually are voting on. And so I think by keeping it where it is, it actually helps to better inform the public. And again, I just go back to, I think it's worth at least seeing how it plays out. If we want to explore some additional items, you know, a sign up list or whatever, that's just worth talking about. But, you know, Sanya, you asked for some feedback, so I'm going to share it with you.
John. So I can work for a multi-million dollar organization and I appreciate the challenge in the length. My suggestion is during, that we need to try, for example, with budget, not have, you know, not add it to a night that we have committee of the whole as best we can, right? To try and limit that, and I think we did better with that last year than we had before. I think that if we do go ahead and we make some adjustments where we're not voting on things prior to people having opportunity, because I think, you know, people think like, I'm going to come in and get the conversation. If anyone, if it is viewed as flip-flopping by obtaining additional information and maybe reconsidering review, maybe that happens, maybe that doesn't. But I do agree though that I think when people have sat here, you know, that's part of what we want, we want people to come in, we want them to sit here and to be more informed about what we do and participate. So I do think that that has happened by the way we do it. But I guess I would challenge each one of us that if we were coming in and we were coming to speak to the council, is that how we would want it? And I'm going to say absolutely, I sincerely doubt that we are going to say, well, hey, let me go through everything and I'll sit to the end and then have my say after you guys have made all the decisions. So I, you know, I would applaud people coming and just seeing what we do. John, I think you're absolutely right in that respect. But I have to say, I don't think any one of us would want to sit through it and do it that way.
Jared.
Here, Alderman Bennion.
Yeah, John, just real brief, just on a couple of points. You know, Vernon talked about if people come in, you don't want to sit here till ten. I agree, neither do I, you know, we can all say we were. But if twenty people walk in that room and speak for three minutes, we're going to sit here for sixty minutes, whether it's before we vote or after we vote, we're still going to sit here just as long. And no, I don't feel undue pressure when the people sitting here, they're not coming here for a civics class. Unfortunately, the young people right there are here to listen to this whole thing. Those people are coming here to give us, they aren't taking in the meeting, they're giving us their opinion. And I think that you devalue their opinion when you voted and then we listened to their opinion. Maybe that's how they want to give us their opinion. I don't believe it really changes anything, I don't think that it causes any flip-flopping. I mean, recently, two people changed their vote on veto and public comment was after the resolution. So I don't think it has anything to do with that, I think it's a better look. It says you are valued. And we sit here a lot of times and we have somebody that's going to come in here and speak at a committee and we say, we're going to rearrange our schedule because this person's time is valuable. Well, why is that person's time even more valuable than most people's time? We do it often, we say, we got into this committee, we're going to rearrange this agenda because this person's a big person, we don't know what their lives are. Not asked for anything, I just said, do you want to have a list, have a list, put it back so that way they can give us their opinion prior to the vote. It's not going to change, I mean, we're all strong enough to sit here and listen to, we've sat here and listened, been berated, we've been yelled at, whatever. It's not going to change nothing, it's not going to change how long we sit here, it's not going to change a damn thing other than getting their opinion before a vote comes. That's just for what it's worth. And I would say, so the labor in it, then move it forward. It's either going to go to a vote or it's not going to go to a vote, either passes or doesn't. So I would encourage you just to say, take the part you want and put it forward.
Yep, Alderman Robinson.
Yeah, I agree with most of what you said and Alderman McCall. And so I guess, you know, like you said, either way, you're going to be here to spend a lot of time, I guess. I guess if it's at the end and there was something that would happen, I guess then you'd have the opportunity to call the public comment closed. But I guess you can do that either way.
Sure.
The language in your vows were.
Right, right, so, and again, I'm always, that was after, I'm always trying to think both sides. So like I said, I don't have a problem with moving it back, just cautionary on that aspect. I do value the opinions of others, that's why I answer my phone and respond to every person that calls me. But at the same time, I'm also thinking, if we did leave it the way it was, is it possible to, if I'm not mistaken, typically, there was a process or a method beforehand? Or maybe we would have to?
I actually just, you have your timelines?
Yes.
I actually just asked John to call on me. I consent to the entire council, according to our code, there's a way that legislation should be handled. Discussion items that are on our agenda now are not something that we've been doing for a very long time. It's been a PL to refer, let's say this PL that we're talking about now, John never talked about it, Sanya said they want to change public comment. She submits the PL to Vernon, Vernon puts it on her phone next week. Next week it's referred to committees the week after that. It's discussed in committees and it's voted on the week after that. So there's a more likely timeline for the council to discuss, get opinions, make decisions. It's not all last minute things, and I know you guys hate last minute or anything.
But I guess my question would be like, I appreciate that because I've talked about that, but I mean, suddenly we want to do it kind of the right way.
Stop it, move forward.
I would say, so, but this doesn't have any bearing on this conversation.
Right, that's true, but it's, well, it does and it doesn't because it's an alternative or an end also. It's something we can also do in conjunction.
And I get that because that's a larger conversation, as I've said for years, because I don't believe that we check the gauges typically when something comes on, you're not sitting here looking for sponsors or other sort of, right? Like there should never be anything from the mayor. It's sponsored by an older person to go on to an agenda. There should never be anything respectively with either incoming or outgoing. Shouldn't be looking for sponsors, it was sponsored and put there by an older person on the committee. So that's a larger discussion and getting more organized. To the point of this, I don't think it changes anything, you know?
I, I'll have to go back to looking at the charter, but I'm fairly certain the mayor has the ability to put things on the agenda. That it doesn't need to be sponsored by an older person. Just, I mean, we can look that up, but I'm fairly certain that the mayor has that ability to put stuff on the agenda.
Then we need to throw that, we need to throw that out.
We need to throw that out of committee, but I think there is some if and or but statements in that.
Just throw that conversation out of committee, sounds a bit of a city operation. What is that, strategic plan?
Okay, so, to wrap this up, I will move this forward with a PL to move the time. I will make some adjustments to this, get it out to everybody. And then it will be on, not next week, the, after that. I need to publish it, so the sooner you can get that to me, the better. Okay, I might station up and just hammer it up. Because that's how we end. Okay, thank you.
So are you going to use this wording here?
Yeah, so I'm going to use the wording and quite honestly, there's only a couple of things, you know, that I think when we look to do things, I mean, quite is, to Jared's point, I think that they can sign in until we get to to the public comment section. And I don't think I have any issues with any of the other pieces.
I have some minor, but I guess just email that way.
Okay.
Before I can mention now.
Okay.
Number five, council president shall act as timekeeper. I think the council president and any future council president should be, that's a need, that to clerk.
Just and his, that's a need?
Yes.
And then, just you don't have to say clerk, just say and his.
Or that's a need, yes, yeah, whomever. If the people are here, coming here to listen or to speak to all seven council members, I think it will be rude for whoever the president is to continuously be looking at a clock, especially for timing them, so that was my thought process in that. Number thirteen, refers to boisterous and improper, inappropriate manner of acting out of disturbance in the peace, et cetera. Part of the charter calls for a sergeant of arms to be present. And that's section two dash sixty-one, I'm going to look it up. And that strictly states the chief of police. So I don't know if that needs to be edited to the sergeant or the command officer or the officer on duty. But we have gone for a long time, we all complained about the fact that we didn't have a lawyer here. We don't have sergeant of arms here either for those committee of the whole meetings. And that has gone on for a long time. So if we're going to put that in this document, then that person should be here.
So.
And then, I'm sorry, and then in conjunction with fourteen, it states that the person will be removed. And I put, how does this work? So.
Well, hopefully different than last time.
Yeah.
So, okay, so under thirteen, I mean, I do think it is up to the council president to make those determinations because it is our meeting, it's not the sergeant of arms meeting. And I think that's where we had some, had a little bit of difficulty. So you're saying that actually he does this, but knowing that the city ordinance says the sergeant of arms should be here so that that should be an, or his or her does a need?
Yes, the charter, the charter.
The charter says.
The charter says.
So what you're saying is that this is okay, but then we need to require that the charter that the city in combines with the charter?
It states right there, it states the lawyer should be here, they're here now. It says that the chief police should be here, so.
Is that on the regulations or something?
I think it's for regulations.
I just read it.
Yeah, it's just regular, yeah.
Okay, so.
Because that's the portion that contains the public comment.
Yeah. So are, any other comments? Tiffany, do you think you have that, just saying kind of the council president should act as timekeeper and or his or her does a need?
Yeah, and there would be a second change as well to change the order.
Yes, change, and then up until the point of public comment, we can sign off.
Can this be just sent to you and then?
Yeah, okay.
John? Someone fell asleep. He's got dial up, please go.
Hello?
Yep.
Okay, anything further on that?
No.
Saying nothing. We are just, I think, making motion to adjourn.
I see.
Got an open day report, so, okay, second is made, all in favor?
Aye.
I endorse, no question, for adjournment, thank you.
Okay.
Have a good night.